Guys, ready? Okay, good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting for March 21st, 2016. Suzanne, can you call the roll?
Mr. Hagerman?
Here.
Mrs. Emma?
Here.
Mrs. Oates?
Here.
Mr. Starr?
Here.
And Mrs. Staff?
Here.
Okay, first thing we'd like to do tonight is recognize some of our students. These students are being recognized for being responsible. Before we call them up, I want to apologize. I guess last week when we were supposed to have our regular meeting, some of you may have showed up and may not have known that we had canceled and moved it a week. We moved it for some other issues. So if you did show up last week, we apologize and thank you for coming back this week. So, alright, if all the students of the month will step up front here in line up. Who's first? You're first. Okay, guys, so we're gonna step up, we're gonna say our name, what grade we're in, who our teacher is, and what we want to do when we grow up, right? Alright. Yeah, there's a little bit of room for you. You can move back out a little bit.
My name is Ava. My teacher...
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Sprinkle.
What grade are you in?
First.
And what do you want to be?
That's great science teacher.
My name is Delila. Third. My teacher is Mrs. Parker, and I want to be a professional chef when I grow up.
There you go.
My name is Caitlin. My name is Caitlin Blackford, and I'm in third grade, and my teacher's Miss McPhee. And I don't know when I'm gonna be when I grow up.
You've got time for the sign. Thank you. What's your name? What's your name?
Charlie.
And what grade are you in?
First.
First grade. Who's your teacher?
Ms. Hudson.
And what do you want to be when you grow up? Anything? You'll decide later? Alright, that's good, good job.
My name is Patrick.
What grade are you in, Patrick?
First.
Who's your teacher?
Mr. Morley.
What do you want to be when you grow up?
I scientist in clotting... clotting sector.
Nice, good job.
My name is Destiny.
What grade are you in, Destiny?
Kindergarten. My teacher is Ms. Bartletay.
What do you want to be when you grow up?
A zookeeper.
My name is...
What grade are you in? Kindergarten, who's your teacher?
Ms. Walker.
What do you want to be when you grow up?
Police.
Police officer? Alright, good job.
My name is Isra...
Go ahead. What's your name?
Israel.
Israel, what grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Green.
What do you want to be when you grow up?
A fireman.
Fireman, good job, buddy.
My name is Lily Jones. My teacher is Mrs. Call in third grade, and when I grow up, I'm gonna be a doctor.
My name's Cora. I'm in second grade, I'm in Mrs. Schoolworks class, and I want to be an artist when I grow up.
My name is Cora. I'm in second grade, my teacher is Ms. Becker, and I want to be a chef when I grow up.
My name is Megan. First. Ms. Frank. A doctor.
My name is Lacy.
And what grade are you in, Lacy?
In kindergarten.
Who's your teacher?
It's Woka.
And what do you want to be when you grow up?
A cashier.
My name is Sophia. My teacher's name is Mrs. Low. I'm in kindergarten.
What do you want to be?
A vet. I grow up.
Great.
My name is Kylie. First. Ms. Lux. A vet.
Okay, everybody back up now. You gotta come back up here, right? We're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have the quick moment of silence, okay? Alright. Start whenever you guys are ready. The Pledge of Allegiance. Board member reports. Student liaison report. Sarah?
Okay, today we have a seventh grade science teacher, Ms. Caudill. And he has just been nominated for the WDIZ and PBS and Idea Stream Innovative Education Award, which is really, really cool. And he's brought a couple of his students to talk about what they're doing in their classroom.
Do you want to go to that one? Gabriel Caudill. I'm a seventh grade science teacher, that's the other way. Yeah, my award's great, my students are awesome, that's how I get it. So, I have Aiden and I have Andrew, both here with me, both showing you guys two different versions of projects we did. Took a lot of my own money and made a green screen room at the middle school, specifically for my students, trying to come up with the most creative ways for them to showcase their knowledge. Same thing with giving them alternatives with regards to project and giving them options and ways to present. So we'll see two different things. One, I believe Andrew is presenting a green screen video that he created, showing a neutralization reaction. And then we have Aiden, who did a bio project on Minecraft, which are both absolutely fantastic. And I decided, you know, these guys should definitely be highlighted for their amazing work, so forgive me, let's focus on those guys. Which one of you two wants to go first?
Go on up, guys.
Kind of stream like that in the river, there's like fish and different... Up here, yeah, over here you can see that the trees are ruined down, and all the animals have died. Up here I'm gonna show abiotic and biotactic. Biotic is living things, see, you got the chickens right here, they're small trees or ferns. These are showing leaves or... Abiotic is non-living things, so you got like a rock or glass, a wood table. These are all different minerals, wood, like, wind, water. Over here, this is showing a population. This is a population of different elephants, it's a... It's a so amount of number of elephants in like one area, so one type of animal.
Another question, did you create all that yourself?
Yeah.
How long did it take you?
About three days, two...
That's it? Wow.
That's really cool.
I'm taking it took months. It's crazy.
Andrew Massey, ladies and gentlemen.
Well, so far the iMovie isn't working, so I'm just gonna explain this carefully. So, in the movie, I had a... I had a baking powder and lemon juice. Now, I had, I think about three grams of baking powder and 0.7 milliliters of lemon juice. When I mixed those together, I created water with an extra substance of the acid, which is a lemon juice and the basic, which is the baking powder. Now, I was able to perform this with keeping certain measurements at hand, and it was very useful to create this with the measurements, and they could be replicated with many times by keeping measurements. So, yeah, this product, it was just to public show that throughout all fields of science, keeping your measurements is very important to replicating experiments, creating new objects, and creating new substances that could actually save art even race.
Awesome. I'll also see if we can get this out for you. Maybe, maybe not.
Well, so in the video, when I created this, it created a release of carbon dioxide. This was because when an acid and a basic mix, they... The OH, which is oxygen and hydrogen of the basic and the oxygen of an acid, when they combine, they create carbon dioxide, which is released into the air, and that's where the water is created. And the rest is just a extract of the substance from the lemon juice and the baking powder.
So when you did this, you used the green screen?
Yes.
That Mr. Caudill created?
Yes.
Is that the first video that you've made using that, or...?
No, we have used the green screen many times. I think we've... You've used it for, I think, ten projects this year so far. And it's very useful in creating iMovies for your backdrop, so we can explain more, better, of what is happening for projects. Hi, I'm Adrian Massey, today I'm going to make a neutralization reaction with sodium bicarbonate and lemon juice. So, to do this, I need about 2.5 milliliters of water. Now I need about three grams of baking powder. So I can do this by weighing the p3 dish. And without any baking powder, I get 11 grams. Now, I need 13 grams total to complete this neutralization action. Seven, eight, it's 14. Now... And we need like five, over here is some water, I... There's some like, the water, it's all... It's white, not really like white water anymore. It's foamy, kind of foamy. That should be... Okay? Okay? Now, to complete this, I need 0.7 milliliters of lemon juice. It's gonna be fizzing, because when the basic, which is the baking powder and the lemon juice, which is the acid, when they combine, they release carbon dioxide, it's there, so you make your fizzing. And because these two are mixing, well, baking powder has a pH level of about nine, which was in the basic, and lemon juice has a pH level about five, which was in the acidic. In order to get it neutralized, I need to be seven, which is pure water. The experiment, neutralization, is I need to get it set in a basic, find to make water, which is... And that makes seven. Now, it's a little green on the... With this paper, I dip this in this new substance, that I made it look quite green, as you can see right here. I'm gonna dip this in. See it out? And as you can see, seven right here is the neutral. And it looks pretty close to what it'd be if it was water. Now, this is very, very, very important to keep the correct measurements, because if you don't have the correct measurements, you can't complete this. About six to four. And it's by keeping the accounts of what... What measurements you have. It's very easy to create this neutralization reaction. In the real world, this helps a lot with keeping your measurements accurate, so that we know what this experiment can do and what... How this can be replicated. Now, I'm going to linearize this, before our measurements have to be recorded to successfully complete this neutralization action. I'm going to double my measurements, see if... If I can still pull this experiment off. So I'm gonna put six grams of sodium bicarbonate. So, right now, this p3 dish, because I need grams. Now I need, uh, this to be at 14 grams, if I want this... If I want to double my... Measurements. So... There we go. Six grams of sodium bicarbonate. Now, instead of 2.5 milliliters of water, I'm gonna put in five milliliters of water. So now, I'm gonna add it in. So that it's red. 0.7 milliliters of central acid, I'm going to now have, I'll take forward, here's the central acid. Should be the same color as previous test. It's a paper, so... So, it's just a previous test, and it's about... Here's the test right now, right here. As you can see, these two look very close to the same. And as you can see, keeping your measurements can really help in replicating experiments.
And so a really cool thing is I asked Andrew, I said, "What project do you want to present?" And he said, "Well, I really like this lab that we did." And I said, "What would you want to recreate?" He said, "You literally have 30 minutes, you have to go in, try to recreate it, we'll set it up super fast." I'm like, "You didn't zero editing time." And he goes, "Yeah, no, but I really want to do it." And so, he literally did a single take, so that is amazing comprehensive knowledge of this subject. And so he was able to recreate that. Awesome work, guys. It's really cool, really cool stuff, and Mr. Caudill just... It's outstanding to see another staff member taking advantage of the technology we have through the one-to-one program and kind of running with it, right? You've obviously made learning fun, so that's good stuff.
And what is your Instagram, again, your classroom Instagram?
107science. Which is just home room number and science.
Really good.
Sorry, I got like 100 followers. I don't need that many. I'm a sponsor. Alright, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next one. It is very impressive. Next on the agenda is a legislative report. What?
I checked the OSBA website, there's no new call to actions or alerts or anything. There's some old stuff on there from, you know, seeking to repeal common poor. It's House Bill 597, but that's been on there for a while. There's also... They were looking at changing, or process to change the college credit boost issues, so... They have a new... There's a House Bill 445, which was introduced, so... Just had its first committee meeting on February 3rd, so I'll keep us up to date on anything that's new with that.
Okay, great. Next item is public participation. If there's anybody that would like to address the board, you can step up to the podium and state your name and speak away. Alright. We'll move on. Superintendent's report, Mr. Caudill.
Okay, it's hard to believe that three months have went by, and it's time for me to give out a quarterly report on my goals. So I'm gonna make it brief, because not a whole lot has changed, but I'm gonna highlight the areas that have. Under academic performance, we're working, continuing to work with the Ohio Improvement Process and the Ohio Improvement Team, and we're working at the district leadership level with that group. And they continue to go back then to their teacher-based teams, work with their... Work at the building level, the building level teams and the teacher-based teams, and so that's continuing progress on with that. On B, the report of progress, walkthroughs, and seeing what we're doing with the center-based learning, blended learning, and co-teaching. We recently did a survey, and that's with the group of papers that you have, and it kind of outlines what is being done at all three building levels, and I'm not gonna read it word for word, but it also then shows you some survey results that Jen Banglin took. She's out into the buildings, working intricately with the teachers on these three methods of teaching, the co-teaching, center-based instruction, and blinded learning. And you can see the difference between the buildings, but there's a reason for the difference in the high school versus the elementary school, because they're using the co-serving model with the intervention specialist at that level. And so that's gonna be the difference between those groups. So, once again, I won't read this word for word, I'll let you study it a little bit. If you have any questions, you can ask me during the week, if you'd like to call me, or discuss it more in depth, but I did want to show you that survey that was given out by Jen, and show you the difference between the three different learning models that we've outlined in my goals. I also attached for your group, the emerging trends. We're working on a presentation that we will be giving out to the staff within about a month or so. That presentation will be ready, and we'll show that to the board. Mr. Lamb and that group that is on the front page, and I have been working with that presentation. And so, it's basically coming up with the... An action plan to be sure that we're infusing the career-based instruction and the college-bound program into our system, and making sure that that's a top priority, that K-12, we're looking at how we're going to come up with programs that are going to be relative and sending students out with a plan by the time they're finished with high school. So, this is an outline of that emerging trends documentation, that's got some goals written down as to how specifically we're going to be working on accomplishing that. And we're going to be working with a group of teachers with this in the near future. It's mostly been, for now, a group of administrators that have put these emerging trends goals together, but as we go further down the road, we're gonna involve the teachers some more. And once again, you could study that, so I'm not gonna read it word for word and go over every single detail of it, but that gives you an overview of what we're doing with the emerging trends. So moving down to goal number two, staff development, staff relationships. One thing that we have on the first part of my goals is to negotiate the VTA and OPC contracts without legal representation at the bargaining table. And I could tell you that tonight in executive session, we're bringing to you a tentative agreement that we were able to come to with the Teachers Association that we did over a three-day period. And we do our best not to involve the attorneys and having them at the table, because quite honestly, that's expensive, and it saves the district money if we can not have them at the table. And so we've tried our best to develop good relationships with, between the administration and the teachers, and we believe that we've done that by coming back to you now with a tentative agreement that hopefully the board will accept, and their members will also accept. They're bringing it before their members for ratification and a vote, and that won't begin until Thursday. So we're thinking most likely that we'll just hold off until the next board meeting to officially approve it, but you'll look at it tonight in executive session, and we'll vote from there. So, that would be the accomplishment of that goal. Now we need to... OPC, our classified union has opened, has asked for an opening of negotiations, which we will comply with and get back, go to the table with them as well. And we try to do the same thing, do it without legal... We have legal representation behind the scenes, but they're not actually at the table, so they're there if we need to ask any questions. And so we'll do the same thing with that union. Moving further down, the group of goals here. We're using the Ohio Principal Evaluation System to evaluate the principals. We're working, we're using the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System to evaluate the teachers. And so, we are continuing to work on those goals. Down to goal number three, board community communications. One of the things that we're in the process of now is surveying the Vermillion Elementary School. The survey is complete, and what we're going to do is plan to propose splitting off the lot, because we need the bus garage. We think that the... To duplicate that bus garage in another location would be very expensive, so the best thing to do is to leave the bus garage where it is. We recommend to not relocate that most likely, unless some opportunity comes up possibly in the future with the city, on city property where we could work together and minimize the costs. But for the time being, what we've done is we've surveyed that property, and the next step is to get approval at the city level of that survey and that split. After the city has approved it, there... We have to take it to the Erie County Auditor's Office, where they have to approve the final split. So this whole process, now that we've got the survey done, should take about two more weeks. And at that point, what we'd like to do, or what I would recommend that we do, is we would put the property out for bid, for a auction, basically. That's how we sold the other properties, we have to do that in public. It's gotta be a bidder... A bid process that has to be advertised. And so, we're in the process of getting all of these... And so we're in the process of getting all of these legal options and legal things that need to be done first worked out, and then bring it to the board and say, okay, are you still in agreement that we're going to sell the property? And at this point, we are recommending that we do, because we believe we have enough space in the district to accomplish what we need on the campus, on the single campus. So that is a continuation of that plan back in 2009, where we said we'd consolidate. And this is the last property that we would have. And we've already got some, some interest in the property without even, without it being officially out there for sale. So people have approached us already at this point, and we're hoping that they would come to the auction and bid on the property, and we can move on and, as we consolidate.
How is the auctioning of some of the old equipment that was in there?
Well, we try to leave the building intact as much as possible. The kitchen, for example, there's a lot of kitchen equipment there, as an example of maybe something that you would think maybe would try to sell. But I think what looks attractive to people is, I think that most likely whoever's going to buy that building is probably going to try to repurpose it for an educational purpose, most likely. And so...
I was thinking more of like the desk, my land campus, things smaller.
There's, there's not a whole lot of great things left there. There are things that were bought back at the time when the building was original. So quite honestly, we sell, we, we have done that with the other buildings. We've sold off as many things as we possibly can, and we will continue to do that. And then, quite frankly, then what's left goes with the building, and that becomes the buyer's responsibility to take care of or dispose of the things that are not. But going further down my goals, one of the things that we did say, if you look on back page, as far as organization and campus, actually, it's on campus safety and security and that type of thing. What we have done is made sure that we've organized that building and really cleaned it up. So Mr. Williamson has done a great job himself personally and with his crew. They went in there, they've got it completely organized and cleaned up. Everything is categorized and ready for a sale.
Okay.
So anything that can be sold, will be sold, and anything that needs to be left behind is all cleaned up. It looks great, so anyone that's coming in there now can get a good look at the building and a good look at the property, and they know exactly what they're getting. I'm continuing to complete my week in reviews to the board members. I also am doing the monthly agendas, the school zone articles, attending the community meetings, Rotary, Chamber of Commerce. I just started back up with those Chamber of Commerce meetings recently. Then down to goal number four, as we said, we did complete that homeland security plan. It was accepted, we have been approved. And we are going to get now for the rest of the school year, more in-depth of making sure that that crisis plan now is carried out to the staff. Quite honestly, being involved with the VTA negotiations took up a lot of time before this and the renewal levy. And that was another, backing up to that goal too, that was another one of my goals, was to make sure that we worked as a committee to get that levy passed, which was great news, obviously. So that's just a real quick overview of all the goals. I've got some further notes here about the drills that we're going to be doing, the camera upgrades that we've done at the middle school. We are looking at some further upgrades for some cameras at the fieldhouse, or not further upgrades, it would be just the installation of some cameras. We think that we need to have at least a minimum number of cameras there, which we don't at this time, which we could do fairly inexpensively. Once again, with Mr. Williamson and his crew, I think that he has done a great job of trying to minimize expense, and we can get those cameras installed with our own people rather than having to have a lot of expense. So we'll buy them locally and work with the local vendor here in town, but we'll do some of the installation ourselves.
Good.
So that's just the 10,000-foot view of things that are going on with the goals, and I didn't want to get into it too much in depth tonight, unless you want me to get more specific, and I can, but...
Would, only thing with the drills, we maybe work with the police and just give them a tour? I mean, probably can't do it all at once, but maybe let some of the officers take them through the school, so they're familiar with...
Do they train here in Oakland?
Yeah, they, they do, and we, we have done that and continue to do that. So we, we actually pay for some software that has our floor plans on the, on their vehicles, so that they can pull it up in the event that there's an emergency.
Right.
And we constantly open up the schools to the police department, so that any time that there's an event to practice, they have that opportunity to do. We let them to do that, because we want to be sure that they're familiar with our, with our facilities.
Same with the fire department.
Same thing with that, so.
Good.
So any opportunity that we can, we make sure that that happens.
Have they had a chance to, we, and we talked about letting them use the fieldhouse? Have they...
They have taken advantage of that, not a lot of them. I'm sure that it's going to grow over time, but we offered the fieldhouse weight room as a training possibility for them. And I know that, I've been told there are some of them that go in there early in the morning, later. So they are taking advantage of it, which is, which was our intention. We can use it for the, the community.
Visible on the campus, too.
Right, yeah, it helps us and it helps them. And whenever we can expand our use of that fieldhouse, we're going to keep working at it. But as we've talked before, I think it was mostly though before this board came on, the three new board members, one of the things that we've got a issue with that fieldhouse is how are we going to supervise that space? And how are we going to pay for it? It wasn't meant to be built as a rec center. It was mostly meant to be built first and foremost for our students. And if we do have the opportunity to use it for the community, we will. But we're having some issues, of course, then how is that going to be paid? And how are we going to supervise it at all times? Going back to my goals and about safety and security, if we can get some cameras in there, that's not going to be the end-all, be-all for supervision of it, but we'll use those cameras then in the cases where it might be a little bit of downtime, where an adult would not be in there and they know that would be under supervision, possibly during those times for 15 minutes or so between transitions. So we'll keep working on that and keep trying to make that aspect of what we're doing better.
Great, thank you. What's up?
Any other questions on my goals for this evening? Okay, so one other thing that I don't have on there that is on the agenda tonight, that I did speak with Chris and Shelley about, that we put on the agenda, and it becomes a question of at what point do we limit these things, and at what point can, do we, is it in the budget to do? But we put a softball coach on the agenda for tonight for approval. And it's a middle school softball position. And the reason why it's on there is because we have 27 athletes that have tried out additionally for the team, that want to play, that from what my understanding are, they're very talented. And I'm sure as you get down maybe toward the last few, that they're looking more to participate, but they're still talented, and they're looking for a place to play. And they want to be part of a team. And so we were looking at cost savings measures of how do we put on another supplemental like this and try to keep costs down. So we're proposing that the schedule would be cut in half, that they would, so they play, they play a total of 18 games, and there would be two squads, and they would play nine games each, basically. And we would be able to save on some uniform costs, because I think we've already found a way to save $500 of the uniform costs. And so transportation would be saved, because we only plan to go to 18 games to begin with. So I know that this is an extra cost, and I, I know that at what point do we say, where do we draw the line with supplementals? And how much are we going to spend on these extras? But all's I can tell you is that, as you know, we continue to look at the budget, and we continue to see how we could keep it balanced. And the financial forecast, it showed in 2015 that it was red, and in 2016, it shows that the financial forecast was red. But we've recently looked at some areas that we can cut back in without significantly impacting programs. We're going to continue looking at that budget, and this is one that I would just say, I think we need to do it, because what, if we're true to our mission statement that the kids are going to be the focus of everything we do, this is focusing on kids and giving them an opportunity. And we'll look for other ways that we could cut back that aren't going to negatively impact kids in any way that we can. So I think that we can make it happen for one year. And the thing about a supplemental is that we don't have to continue to do it year after year. So if the budget gets into a position where we think that we absolutely can't do it, we just wouldn't post it then for the following year, and we'd have to tell the community, sorry, there's a limit, there's only so far we can go. I don't think we're at that limit with this one this year, right now. So that's where I, why I put it on the, on the agenda, because you've got a lot of kids that want to play. I think we give them the opportunity this year to do it. And hopefully, we won't have to make adjustments going forward with that one, but if we do, we would in the future.
With cutting the 18-game schedule in half, are we going to charge all 27 kids the full pay to play? Or we would consider cutting that in half as well?
We weren't going to, to do that, because it's still a reasonable schedule. It's still, we don't believe that it's that watered down. That's quite a bit of participation. It's still quite a few games. And they're going to be going to some away games, and a couple of them will be home, so no, the answer to that question would be no. I don't, because I think that that kind of goes down a slope or slope of some things then, unfortunately, because then people will say, well, they'll, they might start comparing what the level of participation is, is in golf versus tennis versus something else. So I think we'd rather just keep that participation fee...
Consistent.
Consistent.
Fair enough.
So that's an explanation of why that's on the agenda tonight, and hopefully, everybody's okay with it, and I'd say, I'd recommend that we go through with it. But as you know, with the consent agenda, if you don't feel comfortable with it, we can always pull it off too. So that's, that's all I have on my superintendent's report for tonight.
Okay, treasurer's report.
I modified this slightly to approve the January, you know, February financial statements. We had decided a few months ago that we weren't going to do the review one month and then approve the next month. We were going to just approve them. So at your seat, there's a packet with the bank reconciliation on top. So that's for January of 2016. This is the first month since we were back in the state software. The top section are the operating accounts, and I just want to point out that the first merit building project, there's one for Simonson, a one for R.C. I don't know if I discussed this with the new board, but there were liens filed, and so I was required to set money aside and separate interest-bearing accounts for both of those contractors. The next page is the summary of all the different funds, with the beginning balance being the beginning of fiscal year, July 1 of '15, and listing month-to-date receipts, fiscal year-to-date receipts, month-to-date expenses, fiscal year-to-date expenses, and current balance. So the total there is $16,475,246.33 is what is reconciled with all the bank accounts. The next page would be the February. And if you notice what I just told you about the contractors, Simonson, that account is closed, that lien was resolved, and they have been paid in full. So you won't see that in future reconciliations. The total for February is $19,213,893.94, and the reason for the increase is we, we're starting to get the real estate proceeds. We get those twice a year from Huron and Larnell, but they're not even payments. They'll give us advances, I request advances, and I get usually a couple payments that way, and then I get a final settlement in March. So should be getting those anytime from those counties. Again, I have that listed for February, all the different funds and the activity. I was going to do that after we get the side on this, if that's okay.
Yep. So we'll recommend a resolution to approve the January and February financial reports as presented.
I'll move. One second.
Any questions or discussions? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagelmann?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Seid?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
And Mrs. Seid?
Yes.
The next thing that I wanted to talk to you about that gave you the receipt is the SFPR summary worksheet report. And since we'll be going over the forecast in a few months, I wanted to just go over not everything on here, but this is the funding form for the state. It's 14 pages long. This is as of 3/7/16. So the first section on the front page is a summary of all the detail. So you can see each item listed and the state funding that we receive. So if you look at the total state funding on line O, it's $4.5 million. There's some additional funding for Pre-School and Special Ed, $200,000 by 2002. And then the next section is the transfers and adjustments. So those with, like the first one, online ask, Educational Service Center transfer. That doesn't mean that that's everything we pay for educational service centers we work with, but that's what is automatically deducted from the foundation. So the state transfers that money with these adjustments. We do pay a lot of those contracts by check, but they like to have something deducted, so they have that cash flow twice a month. So we do have a slight deduction for North Point. And then you also see the open enrollment and the community school deductions. And then the line Z is our net foundation. So we get, get our payments twice a month. They also deduct STRS, State Teachers Retirement, and SERS, School Employees Retirement, which does not show here. And then at the bottom of the first page and the remaining of the 14 pages, you see the calculations of how they come up with what we give. A lot of information I received is from our EMIS coordinator, Kathy Monroe. She tracks every student, every teacher... She tracks every student, every teacher, and every staff member. And all that information goes to the state to help with these calculations. So you can look that over. If you have any questions. But I just wanted to show you that that state form isn't like, you know, 2,000 kids times $5,800. There's a lot more that goes into it.
On the transfers and adjustments, what are scholarship transfers?
That's for Special Ed.
Okay.
Potassium.
Gotcha.
So if you go through the details, you can see a lot of the detail of students going out and students coming in from different districts. And then you might see something that's FTE, it's not perfect. It's not 1.0 or 10.0. And that might be that they, portion of the day is one place and other portions in another An FTE is basically like a percentage.
So on page four, is that, floor top five, is that where these kids are going out?
Top of page four.
The bottom of page four and five.
Yeah, I think that's going out.
Where they're going to?
I think the state does a lot of the testing. So we can't recreate it.
I'm sure.
And especially if it gets into like three-year averages and evaluation averages. That was enough where I'm not gonna, we need to vote on.
Quiz at the next meeting?
Just looking at the report on, like, the Special Ed students and I'm not, I'm just making the point that unfortunately, this can be very costly to a district. Because if you go and look on page five of the report, it looks to me like we've got a $208,000, $211, $208,000, $211 dollar expense right on, on one of the lines. So, but that's more, that must be for more than one student. Is that what that is?
Yeah. So there's an FTE, I think, 35, 29 students.
Okay, yeah, so I wasn't looking at the FTE with the, with that, but...
Yeah, there's a column at FTE. There's student type, which are the initials of JDSD, then student FTE, and then funded FTE. I understand that. Well, like JDS, if you look at the bottom on the fire lines, there's 1.0, but it's funded at 1.20. So the next item would be to approve the new student activity fund that was requested for SMS Art Club.
What's the amount of that? You're just opening the fund, there's no, I put it in.
She wanted to be able to set her money aside and not becoming would look like the principal's fund. So I don't know how much has been being given in and out. We haven't got that far yet. She needed money, where to put, place to put the money. And then I'll work with her on the budget for that.
Is there a number attached to it or?
It's the 300, I think I wrote it on here. They gave me the off my notes. It's fund 209-938A.
But there's no monetary value. It's, yeah, it's not been established.
20938A.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll recommend a resolution to approve fund number 20938A, SMS Art Club, to be used to purchase art supplies and materials for after-school activities.
I'll move.
Second. So these are clubs or?
Student activity funds.
But I mean, for materials for after-school activities, is it just things that are going on currently and they just need?
I think this was a fairly new thing and they wanted their money to be restricted.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just confused as to what the programming is.
I believe that we've got, we've got some middle school teachers here, so they can, do you mind telling us about what's going on with the art programs and after-school activities?
Sure, maybe after-school weekly. I'm not sure how often, but every week. But they do different projects. A lot of the art that you see on the walls in the building at middle school, the art club painted. They're also holding like after-school paintings. Like if you've never seen like that painting, it's this thing there. Kids get like the canvas and then Andy Askins walks them through, tries to paint a painting and they can take it home with them. So, and things like that. So I think it's, I support that.
Good news?
Anything else? Call the roll, please.
Thanks.
There's a lot of people who, a lot of students that are there. I'm talking, the room is completely full. My kids are having a blast. I mean, it is, it is very productive. It's not like, you know, kids come in and hang out and draw pictures. Like they are creating sculptures, painting, painting, they're gonna display in the trophies. They can see they were, I mean, there's, I was shocked. I would never create anything like that. I consider myself artistic.
But that would be okay if they were just coming in and hanging out with each other too?
No, it isn't.
I'm okay with that.
It's made, it's made. God, I'm impressed.
Call the roll?
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Oates?
Yes.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
And Mrs. Stapp?
Yes.
Donations, a resolution to accept the following donations: $100 to Vermillion Elementary School, from the Birmingham United Methodist Church, to be used to assist students with food requirements, and $150 to the Darren T. Schultz Thirst for Knowledge Scholarship for advocacy.
I'll second. Call the roll?
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Mrs. Oates?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
And Mrs. Stapp?
Yes.
The next item I want to just start, be ready, to get a discussion. That was something I asked Cindy to do, but I couldn't remember who requested the change on the board meeting date. Can't remember who or why.
Do you remember?
But I told you.
It's, it's the 8th, isn't it?
18th.
18th, sorry.
So yeah, we're ready for discussion items, so we can talk about.
Okay, sorry.
There was a suggestion to move the April meeting, the regular meeting, to the 18th.
I don't remember why. I'm not sure why. I knew somebody requested it.
Is there something going on on the calendar?
There was something. I just can't remember who or why.
It was important, though.
Must have been.
Anyone have an issue with the 18th?
No.
Okay, so the April meeting will be on the 18th.
Okay.
So we'll recommend a resolution to change the date of the April regular meeting to April 18, 2016.
I'll move.
I'm second.
Call the roll?
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Mrs. Oates?
Yes.
And Mrs. Stapp?
Yes.
I do have some additional items that I try to be brief with on discussion. I just was made aware of this and didn't put this on the superintendent's report because it just came in. But Saylorway Middle School was notified today that the Department of Natural Resources awarded a grant in the amount of $2,500 to fund supplies and equipment for an archery program at SMS. The remaining funds for this program were donated by the Vermillion Education Foundation. So they're going to, Kurt Haberman is a certified archery instructor and he'll run the program as part of physical education. So there will be arrows, bows and arrows flying around.
Do they have suction cups again?
Middle school, middle school students and arrows, what could go on?
Yeah, right.
I did it when I was middle school.
You're still whole, yeah.
So, that should be, that should be fun and interesting to watch, for sure.
From afar.
That I know who just went to Louisville, Kentucky and competed in nationals. Yeah, it's a, it's a big thing. Right. It'll be fun. I didn't know Kurt was certified, so it'll be fun to watch too.
I did, I believe he recently was certified at the request of Mr. Zeller, so.
Okay, good. So that's good news and that would be fun to watch. Another thing that I wanted to discuss just for a few minutes tonight, and I gotta check, I did not hear back from our attorney on this today, and I don't know what our legal limitations on this would be, but we've made a lot of headway with our drug program and we had, the participation has been good ever since we started it. I think we led the way in the area for these type of programs to happen in other cities. And a lot of times, we've gotten calls over the years and you've seen an increase in the number of school districts that are doing it. But we're still trying to make more headway to get more students involved with it. And I just would like to bring up the possible option, if we're allowed to do it. And we kind of did it inadvertently this year without doing it purposely, but parents actually had to opt out of the program at the ninth grade level that were in regular education. And I don't know exactly how it happened, but they had to check a box or they had to uncheck a box and it turned out that basically, they got entered into the drug testing program at the ninth grade level and it worked out well. We only had three parents that called up and said, hey, what's going on with this? Why, why is my kid doing it? And they took them out, but the rest of the parents left them in. So we tested ninth graders this year. And I'm proposing that if there's any way that, if we can legally leave that language in there somehow, notify parents, though. What I, what I, we talked with the counselors today and we met for a while talking about this subject. And I proposed that we'd send a letter home to the parents explaining what we're doing and tell them about the success of the program and tell them about the things that we know are still affecting the community, which is just a continued ridiculous amount of heroin, unfortunately, that is in and around the community. And it's not just ours. But if we can legally do it, I think we should try, but I think that the optimal word is, word is, can we legally do it? I don't know. And I think if we find out that we can, I'd propose that I'd come back to the next board meeting and say, yes, we can do this. Then I'd send out a letter to the community telling them that they'll have the opportunity to check the box to opt out. So I'll give you some more information about it. I'm waiting to hear back from the, from the attorney. I'd like you to all think about it, think about whether or not you were comfortable to do that. And I know that some people are gonna look at that and say, well, that's a violation of my rights or you're taking away some of my freedom to, to do that. And I see that point of view. But I think that now that we've had the program here over time, that people see that it is a trusted method of doing things that is not, it's completely trying to be a way to help kids and offer them an opportunity that if they are doing any type of substance abuse to get off that substance and we're offering help and counseling. It wasn't intended ever to be, we got you and now you can't play sport or you can't park a car in a parking lot. And I think it's worked out well. And if we can offer that opportunity for kids that might be struggling with some sort of abuse to get themselves off of it.
Or fear practice.
Right. Right. So.
Will you let us know what?
I'll let you know what the attorney says. I'll put it in the week in review. And then we could talk about it at the next board meeting. And if you're all comfortable with going forward with it, I'd like to, to do that. But we can talk about it more. And then the last item that I've got that I just voted on, and this is kind of ironic because we, at one point, got into the, another conference and we withdrew from the conference. And now that very conference that we withdrew from is joining the conference that we are just getting into. So the SBC and the NOL are gonna combine. And so here's the list of, of the schools that are gonna become part of the conference. And it won't be this year, it'll be the year after. I accidentally stapled them the wrong way, so sorry about that, but. The machine, I didn't do it that way. Okay, so here's what you're gonna see. It's broken up into big schools, small schools, and mil, big, large, median, and small schools, basically. And so this is what it's going to look like. And for example, in the football conference, we're in the middle. We're not in the large and we're not in the small. We're somewhere in the middle. So that's what it's gonna look like when the NOL joins the SBC, and that will happen in 2017, 18. Next year, we'll be just in the SBC with those SBC teams. So in, I, I think that this is a good thing because the bigger the conference and the more teams that are in it, the more solvent that it is. We've already had this experience when there's not enough teams in a conference and one team grows as big as it did like in Avon and North Ridgeville. First it happened with Avon. When they got too large, they left the conference. And that creates a domino effect in a conference that is too small. And that was the beginning of the end for the West Shore Conference that we were in. So now that you've got this many teams in it, I think that that will benefit us.
So is this approved and written in stone?
That's been voted on by the league and it's been accepted. And it will happen beginning in 2017, 18. And that's all that I have for extra discussion items. Any questions on that?
No, we did have one more item on the agenda for the continued use of board docs.
Sorry.
For agendas and minutes, right?
Yeah, I sent that out on the week in review and I think I got back from a couple of you, but especially after tonight. I can't get anything to say, don't you know?
I think there's some value to it, but not for the cost.
I think we need to, a way to do, I think we can do some of the same things, but then maybe Google Docs or maybe, you know, Charlotte Moore.
I mean, Google Docs helps with collaboration, sharing folders, that kind of stuff.
Yeah. I think that's really nice to have all that one place where you can even go back and look at it in previous, previous meetings.
Yeah, I think having a, an electronic catalog of minutes and agendas is a good thing. As far as the use of it during meetings, I, we don't get anything out of that, I really don't think. And, and on a regular basis, I don't know about the rest of the board, I don't use it. I don't, I don't go in and use it, you know?
Well, maybe Sean and Cindy and I come up together.
Maybe come up with a better option or something different.
They make a light, soft...
They make a light software too, so it will achieve the portal searchable and all that, just not the, the scoreboard, the voter.
The interactive, yeah.
It sounds like it's about headed for missile leaders too.
Oh, yeah. She says it's difficult to put things in.
So unless, yeah, that's one of the questions I was gonna ask, is if it doesn't serve, if it doesn't serve a positive purpose for your office, then I don't think it does much for us either, so.
But you said we're on anyway through June 1st or?
I don't know if the renewal's June 1st, but we can, we can start working on it. And off to another day.
Good. The one other thing I wanted to bring up, a comment more than anything, is just to, Phil mentioned it earlier, just the fact that the renewal levy did pass this past week. And I think it's a great statement for the community, great support. It didn't pass by one or two votes, it passed by quite a bit. So that's a really, really good thing and it sends a message. So glad to see that the community supports the school district and, you know, the vision of the district. And it's, it's a good time and we'll move forward with it. Any other discussion items? Okay. Next is the consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the board, in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted in one single motion unless a board, unless a member of the board, the treasurer or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately. The items are, approve minutes of previous meetings, regular meeting February 8, 2016, special meeting March 3, 2016. Approve the following fundraisers. SMS PTO raffle baskets, March to May, 2016. VHS peer leadership class, spring fundraising ideas to benefit Kick It For Cancer. VHS football cheerleader car washes Saturdays from May to August of 2016. VHS football cheerleader mini camp, or mini cheer camp, June or August of 2016. VHS football cheerleader raffle calendar, June to August of 2016. VHS basketball cheerleader holiday gift wrapping, December of 2016. Eighth grade student council dance sale of pop and pizza, February 12, 2016. Senior class 20 plates around the world, March 22 through April 15, 2016. And senior class selling ads for prom program and posters, March 22 to May 13 of 2016. Approve the following contracts. Agreement for educational services between Lorraine County Board of Development Disabilities and Vermillion Local School District. Contract for children with disabilities, open enrollment with Valeria City School District. Memorandum of Understanding with Lorraine County Community College for College Credit Plus and My University Guaranteed. Memorandum of Understanding for Inter-Agency Transition Agreement with Local Education Agencies in Erie County. Approve the following employment actions. Resignation of Mark Kasky, bus driver, effective March 18, 2016. Payment of $125 to Kurt Habermell, Brett Colahan, and Kurt Ennis for laundering of basketball uniforms. One-year student worker contract for the 2015-16 school year to David Mickle as part of the Work Experience and Career Exploration Program. One-year supplemental contract for 2015-16 contract year to the following pending pupil activity permit and completion of background check. Savannah Maury, assistant middle school track coach, level 13, step zero, $2,287. Gabriel Cordill, middle school softball coach, level 14, step zero, $2,450. One-year additional duty contract for the 2015-16 contract year to the following. Rachel Blandman, assistant director, major musical, level nine, step two, $1,797. Anything that anyone wants pulled, or? Okay, I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mrs. Emmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Emmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Emmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Stuck?
Yes.
And Mr. Stuck?
Yes.
Okay, there were no items removed. Dates of future meetings. We have a regular meeting on here, it says April 11th. We've already taken action to move it to April 18 of 2016. May 9, June 13, and July 11. For the following three months, regular meetings. At this time, there's no special meetings on the schedule. Next item on the agenda, we don't take action on that, right? We do? Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, I thought we don't take action on the future meetings, right? Okay. Next item on the agenda is executive session. Recommend a resolution that the board move into executive session for the purpose of preparing for conducting or review of negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees.
That's second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Emmes?
Yes.
Mr. Stuck?
Yes.
Mr. Habermough?
Yes.
Mrs. Oates?
Yes.
And Mrs. Stuck?
Yes.